I'd like to call a meeting of the Willetts City Council order for January 28th. Could we all rise and join Ron? Pledge allegiance.
Please join me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Yes.
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 Here.
President.
Here. The first thing we need to do this evening is I'd like to try and amend our agenda. We have a closed session item that came up subsequent to our posting of agenda and it's necessary for us to meet. This regards the existing issue, the litigation of the City of Willets versus Remco Hydraulics. I'm not sure what the item specific is, but we have something that has timely interest that we need to address tonight with legal counsel in closed session. So I would ask someone to make, if they could concur.
Second.
A motion and a second. We have anybody that objects to amend an agenda on Remco. Can you have a roll call, please?
Dr. Mark Strasburg?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Madalena?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So then we'll move back to our regular agenda and the first item is just public communication. The council welcomes participations in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person and this is on items that are not on the agenda this evening, so if you have a, something that you wish to let us know that's not on the agenda, this will be your time to get up and make a presentation.
I think Adrian has.
Mayor Burton, we have some guests with us tonight that we invited this morning after reading the article in today's Willets News. We have the 2015 Miss Mendocino contestants that are, that hail from Willets with us tonight. There are four contestants and so I'd like to introduce them and have them come up and just say a couple of words about their platform this year and then the.
It's a great improvement to the audience.
The, the actual pageant is being held on Saturday, February 7th at 7:00 PM at Ukiah High School.
Right.
So if I could invite first Cheyenne DeMarco.
I am Cheyenne DeMarco and this year my platform is called Pause for Veterans and it's a walk-a-thon that I'm holding this weekend at the Red Grove Park and it's not only helping spread awareness about PTSD or post-traumatic stress disorder, but also helping to raise money for the Pause for Veterans organization, which rescues dogs facing euthanasia and takes them in and trains them to become service dogs. So I'm really excited for this walk-a-thon and it's taken me a lot of work to put together in such a short amount of time, but it is this weekend, Saturday, at, starting at 10 o'clock. Doesn't really have an ending time. I'm just gonna let people walk until they get tired, I guess. And there's gonna be food, snacks, music. Mike Tobin is helping me host it. He's gonna be talking and there'll also be a raffle going on, so that should be fun. And yeah.
Great.
Is there any questions?
Any questions here? Well, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to it.
And the next we have Amanda Mason.
My platform this year is Stand Up Week at the middle school and it's a program where a group of eighth graders get together and they pick a trouble that's going around in the world, like hunger or like dog abuse or something like that, and they pretty much present it to the class and kind of relate it to the community. Like when I was in eighth grade, I did mine on hunger and I raised up to about $800 for the local food bank, so I thought that it would be a great thing to, for my platform, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next we have Emily Oberd.
Hi. My name is Emily and my platform is helping seniors through the arts. I'm gonna be holding, doing little art classes, arts and crafts classes in senior homes and senior centers to help with art therapy for seniors.
Great. Thank you.
And then last but not least, we have Michaela Terrell.
Hi. I'm Michaela Terrell. My platform is anti-bullying. It's something that I feel is kind, it's not taken seriously as it should be and so my plan is to do presentations to as many schools as I can and to kind of give information that's not well-known. So for instance, one of the facts that I found out was that emotional or verbal abuse or bullying has actually dramatic effects on the brain. It destroys connection, stunts brain growth and actually causes scarring in the brain, which most people don't know. And so I kind of want to give a more interesting, in-depth perspective on it and inform people.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much ladies for coming on such short notice.
Yeah, and you know, we have, we've begun a tradition here of a Willets winner, of Miss Mendocino, so we hope that we can continue that, so.
Could I?
Thank you.
Could I just say something?
Sure.
Sure. I just impressed with your, your, your goals. I remember back in the day when I was a toddler and we used to watch the beauty pageants, you know, the Miss America and everything, and their goals were to make world peace and prevent hunger and, you know, all this kind of stuff that's just way out there. You guys really have your feet on the ground, some very good programs and congratulate you for that.
Great. Thanks. You're welcome to stay. You won't be, you won't, you won't be unusual for people to leave after. Do we have any other public communications this evening? Items that are not on the agenda? No action will be taken, but second, third, and last call, seeing none, then we will move on to public matters and I get, the first item here is a proclamation designating Paint the Town Red Week of February 2nd through February 7th. And this proclamation I'd like to read goes, whereas heart disease is the number one killer of women, claiming more lives than all other forms of cancers combined, the American Heart Association has formed a Go Red for Women campaign and declared the month of February is Heart Month. And whereas February 2nd to 7th is declared the week for communities to paint the town red in honor of bringing awareness to heart disease that strikes people we love. And whereas the City of Willets businesses, along with Barra of Mendocino and the Willets Chamber of Commerce Local First Committee will decorate and support this great cause. And whereas it behooves all citizens of the City of Willets to promote, foster, and participate in and enjoy this great event, now therefore I, Bruce Burton, Mayor of the City of Willets, do hereby proclaim February 2nd through February 7th to Be Paint the Town Red Week and urge all citizens of the City of Willets to visit local participating businesses, to learn about heart disease signs and prevention strategies, share stories, and support a great cause, along with supporting community, local commerce. And I applaud the City of Willets for joining as a community to celebrate Women's Heart Month of 2015. And I think we have Miss Martha, Mrs. Martha Barra here today.
Thank you, Bruce.
To take, receive this proclamation.
First of all, I want to comment on the Miss Mendocino pageant. It, we can't support it enough because this grooms young women to present themselves in a way that they never think they can. We're really proud of those four and I'm sure one of those from Willets will win. I want to acknowledge all of these fine people who've joined me tonight and this is what happens when you have a broad collaboration of working on a very worthwhile cause. And it's from Kathy to Lynn Kinley, to Katrina. It's just amazing what, and the Willets Hospital, Frank Howard Hospital, Ukiah Valley Medical Center, Chambers of Commerce Local First, but in support of the Heart Association. And we thank you for wearing those red hot dresses. My dear Bruce.
Okay, moving along to the next.
Can we before?
Do you want to expand on that?
Well, yeah, just before we leave that one, Ms. Barra, before you leave, maybe Lynn, would you be able to talk a little bit about some of the things that are going on here locally? For this, for this week? There's just a couple of events I know that are prominent.
We didn't all wear red for nothing.
Thank you all for, for doing that, but I think this is a wonderful joint project that we're working on and hopefully next year we'll be able to spread it throughout the entire county. We are going to do basically the week of the 2nd through the 7th. We're working to have the businesses have little tokens that they will, if they come into the business, they can get a token, if they, if they purchase something and they will, we're hoping that the merchants will have different, you know, sales, they'll have their windows all decorated in red anyway, so this is perfect timing for us. I think that, I'd like to point out that the, the engine behind this was certainly Barra and they have been so wonderful to work with because we are all benefiting through their efforts. They have, what is it, a 5,000?
Very big database.
Database. And they have been wonderful to work with. Also, one of the things that is happening on, in, I think it's Tuesday, the Avenue to Wellness is going to have a program on heart health and that will be at the senior center, I believe it's from 5:30 to 6:30. So that will be included in more of the information that we get out. So if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but it, I think it'll be a really great event and it looks like there's a lot of interest for next year because we, we started a little late on this, but you know, we aren't, we can do it. For Willets, we can do it, so.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
I might just add that next week on February 5th is the greatest poster child for Women's Heart Health, Edie Cecarelli turns 107.
Yes.
No, excuse me. Yeah, 107.
107.
08 to 15, yeah. Turns 107.
We've been in contact and I think you've probably had contact with Evelyn.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I said, oh, how perfect. She should be our poster child for the week.
She'd love it.
Oh, I think she would, no?
Yeah.
Okay.
Dancing. Yeah, dancing.
She, she can. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot for coming.
Amazing.
So we have an update on the city's emergency water supply project. Is that, are you or Mr. Rod?
That would be Rod.
Mostly hit, most of Mr. Rod.
Just a, just a quick one, since a couple of weeks ago, we've got most of the forming done for the slab of the groundwater treatment plant building and expect to pour that, I believe next Thursday is what we're shooting for. We're gonna have a little weather on Monday, so I think Thursday gives us enough time. The metal building, metal building itself was, was delivered today, so once we pour, we'll have to let the foundation cure for three weeks and then we'll be able to put the metal building up, which should take another, about another three weeks. We're still waiting on our 401 permit, but it sounds like that could come in any day from the Regional Water Quality Control Board and obviously, you know, then we'll drill the replacement well, once it dries out. Plan to have a budget number for next meeting. We looked at it earlier and we still have $800,000 in our, in our budgeted amount for this year under the emergency water supply project, so.
Great. Any questions up here for Rod on that issue?
This is 800,000 to spend or in the fund?
That's in, that's in the budget, budget item under emergency water supply.
Okay.
So.
It hasn't yet been spent.
Correct. Correct.
I'm still concerned about trying to get additional, you know, outside funds to help us with this and, and the fact is, is that staff is spread so thin. I wonder if we couldn't come up with a way, I don't know, to hire someone that builds in the expense of their temporary contract into whatever grants they can get and if they, if they can't get it, then they, you know, don't get anything or something. I mean, I, I think it might be beyond the capabilities of our, of our current workload.
Recently I was talking to Alan Filary and he offered up a name that Rod and I had discussed the other day, so we just need to finish that conversation and make contact and see if that would be a viable solution.
Because I know there is, I know there is still funding sources out there, but you know, everything has its own timeline and its own, you know, challenges.
I think we get the press and everybody else gets the money.
Yeah, we need to change that.
Okay, thank you, Rod.
Thank you.
Moving to the consent calendar, we just have some council minutes.
I'll move, we approve the consent calendar?
Give her a second.
Yes.
Anybody public comment on the consent calendar? Corrections, additions, emissions, subtractions, multiplications? Do we have a roll call on the consent calendar, please?
House Speaker, Mr. Strasburg?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Madalena?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Right to appeal. Persons who are dissatisfied with the decisions of the city council may have a right to review of that decision by court. Cities adopted 1094.6 of the Code of Civil Procedure, which generally limits to 90 days the time within this, decisions of city boards and agencies may be judicially challenged. So we're gonna jump next to city, some verb, any verbal reports from the city manager?
You skipped informational reports, just.
Yeah, well that.
Those are just informational.
They're just informational reports. There's no, no council action.
Adrian, do you have any? A few things. I think Suzie might say a few, a few more comments about this, but we're charting the, the course and the schedule for this year's budget process and so the first order business is a mid-year budget review and what we're looking at doing is combining that with a revisit of our council goals that we did a couple of years back and having a separate workshop for that as opposed to at a regular council meeting so that we can just focus on that. So we're looking at Monday, February 23rd, which was already slated for a finance committee meeting. And then this would be, it would be at a two to three workshop process altogether. The mid-year budget review would be presented at the first workshop, but the overall revisiting the council goal setting and community engagement and participation leading into the budget process would, would be a total of two to three workshops using the consultants that we had last time. So for the community involvement part of it, we're looking at March 21st, which is a Saturday. So I wanted to float that concept to you guys and see if you had any feedback about that because we are gonna have to firm up those dates pretty quickly. So you can let me know on that in the next couple of days. What were you thinking on the March one?
March 21st?
Yes, Saturday.
Would that be a morning or?
A morning.
Like 10:00.
5:00. 5:30.
On a Saturday?
I, I, yeah.
The first workshop on February 23rd, which is a Monday, we would likely be looking, I, I would prefer to have it in the morning, just because everybody's fresher, but I think it might be more conducive for everyone's schedule, all of you and the community to have it in the late afternoon. So again, if you have any thoughts, just let me know in the next couple of days on that. I could do daytime. So part and parcel of this, we are gonna be doing labor negotiations again. The two MOUs that we have, we had extended those through June 30th of 2015. So we would look to commence those negotiations in late March, early April. And important note here, the healthcare information for, our plan year goes July 1st through June 30th. We are going to be getting pretty solid information on any changes there from REMF at the April REMF board meeting. So Suzie and I will be attending that and bringing back information to all of you as well as to inform the negotiations process. We're meeting with our new HR consultant tomorrow morning. They're coming up from, okay. And I'm going to meet with Suzie, myself, and Jerry and Rod and do some individual, just some, get some direct feedback about what our needs and challenges are and then we'll get them going. And then Suzie and I went to the annual REMF board meeting last week and that was Wednesday afternoon through Friday, ended up being afternoon. This, I think this was the first time, maybe the second time, the full 15-member board met. So if you remember, they've had founding members and then associate member cities. We were, we were associate member, so now they have all 15 members participating in that board permanently. We had topics on workers' comp, safety, liability coverage and claims, personnel issues, then the board meeting itself and some strategic planning went along with that. So that was, that was a full slate and then of course Thursday afternoon, I got an interesting phone call that something going on here in Willets. Yeah, yes.
Could, could, Tess, could you tell us the 15 members of REMF?
Let's see. There's Ukiah, Cloverdale, this is in any particular order, St. Helena, Lakeport, Fortuna, Eureka, Rondet Park, Fort Bragg, Arcata.
Crescent City?
No, no longer. They got kicked out.
Sanoma.
Sonoma. Yes, I thought I said Ukiah.
Windsor?
Windsor, Windsor. Windsor's in there? They are in there. 15, I thought. Oh, gosh.
I don't think you said.
I think I've said 10. Yeah, Fort Bragg is one of them.
You have said 10. I just, I just, it doesn't go, it doesn't, Santa Rosa?
No.
It's, it's a more, smaller, a little bit smaller.
Smaller cities, the four largest cities in this group are Eureka, Arcata, Ukiah, and Rondet Park.
Buena Rima?
Yep.
Okay. Well, just curious, that's not, I just was kind of trying to ask.
Hillsburg.
All right.
3:00 is 4:00 and I'll go texting. We'll be having a meeting and you'll be like, "Here he is."
Okay, any other reports?
That'll do it for today.
Okay. So it looks to me like we are now gonna go to department recommendations. Anything from administration, city clerk? Kathy? Suzie, any?
I don't think I have, I think you covered everything.
Any, any, I'll be interested to hear if you get any new sales tax information with gas being down at 3, 2, 25 a gallon.
Show the internet, sweetie.
Okay. Jim, are you gonna hold?
No, no report.
Okay, public safety. Chief.
Just real brief, first of all, thanks to the finance department. They're doing a great job of giving me numbers. I have my quarterly reports that, on a COGS grant, we have to submit reports and we get money back from them. On our 911 system, the state approved an $18,000 expenditure for some ergonomic furniture for our 911 upgrade and we just got the approval on Monday and we've ordered it with the vendor and it's one of those purchases where we don't actually spend any of our money, the PO goes to state, so that's a positive there. We obviously had the excitement last week. We responded out to the county, it was all county in that area, but we helped with traffic control and showed up there initially and helped coordinate the road closure and then backed off as soon as CHP got people in place. Then I think last night we had an accident down there at Gregory Lane, somebody hit that center, I guess pedestrian.
Yep, pedestrian refuge.
And so that seems to be a target on a regular basis there, so. And that's all I have.
This might be a question for you, Joe, or for Adrian. Do we have any status on securing the John's Place property? Since I know that, you know, some vagrants were starting fires in there and the back is getting pretty bad.
Yeah, we respond, we've got, contacted the property owners. Again, we worked with John Sherman on a couple of those situations and I think Adrian got an update from the fire chief, I think we did at the staff meeting the other day, that he's working with the.
The insurance adjusters. Yeah. So it sounds like it's on track. I mean, obviously it's unsightly and we all want to see that addressed as soon as possible. The fire chief at this point seems to believe that the owners seem pretty motivated and the funds have been released for their use in this cleanup. So it should, it should be happening. Couple of things do need to happen they need to submit. I think the asbestos plan has been cleared and, but the demolition plan needs to be submitted to the city. Okay, because I've just noticed that in the back, at the back of the school, the fence is now being, you know, slowly pulled down and it's.
Again, we respond to situations there, but since, again, we're not the building officials, so we.
Of course, yeah, it is line of sight out, out your back windows, so.
So, so we, we get calls from the neighbors and we've been driving by and checking and in fact, on a couple of occasions, we've been the ones that have caught the folks inside, so.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, any other reports, Rod? Maybe a little on the water plant, maybe?
Of course, the Public Works crew's been working on the emergency water supply project and we have four people right now, one person working on parks, three working on the emergency water supply project, so we've had to skip a couple of days of sweeping to get that done, just so everybody knows, but we'll get back, get back on that as soon as, as soon as we can. But we're doing a really good job, so that's all we can ask. The water supply, or, excuse me, the water treatment plant project is, is winding down toward the footings for the, the cover, the clarifier cover today and the, the hood, the replacement hood is going in right now into the clarifier, so there's gonna be a little bit of paving that needs to be done and I don't have a specific, or when the actual cover is going to be here to put up over the clarifier, but it's, it's really, it's starting to wind, it's starting to wind down. Should we, should have a, get close to a pretty firm date when we should expect completion.
We do have the second pump online.
We do have the second pump online. We're supposed to have the third pump this week, third and fourth pump this week. Second pump went in last Friday, so we're in better shape there. So we will be doing some additional work up there on Centennial, installing a new valve at the outlet, the base of the dam and we have to get some divers in there to check the, check the, check the valve that's inside to show that it's working properly for dam safety, division of dam safety to, to make them happen. How's that? Other than that, the engineering department's been bouncing back and forth between emergency water supply. water supply and the water supply, and Jeremy's been working on Humboldt Street, doing the final estimate and starting to finalize the plans and specifications, and we're gonna have a schedule for that, when we expect to get that out. We wanna have it out by June 1st, you know, have construction start by June 1st, excuse me, so that... We just haven't sat down and nailed down the schedule yet, so.
Curiosity, how, do you hire out the divers to go down?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, we're contracted, we're contracted with a company out of, I believe they're out of Eureka.
So, they're, they're just like sort of a sole source kind of thing, 'cause they're the only ones around that do it, or is that...
It's not very common, yeah. We haven't been able to find that service.
And they have to meet our liability insurance requirements.
Yeah, okay.
Did you wanna put your snorkel on and do that?
Maybe in the summer.
Good, thank you, Ron.
Thanks.
Move on to council and committee reports. MCAG is gonna report for me.
Me.
Thank you. LAFCO?
So, LAFCO is meeting on Monday. You guys have received an updated draft of the MSR. The public review and comment period has been closed, but the commission wanted to see a, you know, all of the notes and corrections in a somewhat final form. So, we've got this, and I believe we also have access to one in strikeout, if, you know, if you need that. I believe I have that in my email. If you wanted to take a look at it, I believe they incorporated most of the comments that we put forward. I haven't gone over everything, but it's worth looking at. It's by no means a perfect document, but it's, you know, they've, they've addressed a lot of the concerns.
So, do you understand that the black print versus the red print?
I believe the red print was what we added.
Those were our adds?
Yeah. Some things just to note, like on page four, there's a comment about the watershed is owned by the city but has not yet been formally annexed to the city. This area is currently part of the unincorporated Mendocino County. And then, on page 23, there's some additional comments about our out-of-area connections, which is one of the things that I believe there's gonna be a recommendation that within a year, we come up with a map of, yeah. So, one of the recommendations on page 35 is within 12 months of adoption of the MSR, this city shall provide LAFCO with a detailed report, including mapping of all existing out-of-agency service connections.
I, potentially, good news on that, and I'm not sure I even shared it with Rod. We may already have a map. Ellen seems to think that was done some, some years back. So, we're gonna check the files and see. If not, you know, it's totally doable.
Yeah, and either way, we won't have to have it in this document, but we'll get it. Yeah, it's a doable thing, but we just didn't, you know, as Adrian mentioned, we didn't have it done, or actually, the Rockon Associates didn't provide that, and we didn't have it. Rod, did you have an additional comment?
I got, she sent me a map last week, that's for the out-of-service.
Perfect. So, if, you know, look it over, if there's something egregious, let us know, and I'll bring it up on Monday to have it included. If it's, if it's a minor thing, or just something that you'd like expanded, we're, we're pretty close to the final document.
Well, I'm just looking at a paragraph here that is egregious.
Okay.
I have to look at it. It's about the water, what is treated. This is on 24th. And if this, I mean, I have to remember...
The gallons?
It doesn't look right. Yeah, it doesn't look right. I remember going through the math, and I'm seeing the part of sentences producing significantly less than the water produced between 94 and 02. So, I have to review on those, but who, where do I get it back to?
Should comments be sent to you, Adrian? Does that work best? And there is, oh shoot, what was it wrong? That just made me think, oh, on page 23, there's a mention about the, I'm going to the third paragraph, there was, we had some discussion at the meeting about the Regional Water Quality Control Board Compliance Order, which we subsequently had rescinded, and I wanna know if staff is okay with that language, 'cause I thought we had agreed to, not take it out, but I thought, I thought we had language that made it clear that we were able to...
We requested that that reference be stricken because it had been issued in, based on faulty information. And I think initially, they were going to go along with that, and then somebody, one of the commissioners requested that there was still a reference in this document about that.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure that staff is okay with, maybe instead of just saying this order was rescinded, maybe say it was rescinded because it was issued with faulty, I don't know, something. Anyway, so, so take a look at it if you get a chance, and get comments to Adrian, I guess, over, before Monday.
Right.
'Cause hopefully, we'd, we'd really like to get this completed so that we can move on.
So, why is, on page 27, why is what's in red all struck out?
We felt like a lot, there was a significant amount of editorializing on the wastewater treatment plant portion, and maybe, Rod might be able to speak to this better, but we felt like the data they were using for their table wasn't accurate, and then we started getting into a discussion about that at LAFCO, and they sort of felt like it was beyond the expertise of the commission. So, we just...
These are, these are our flow numbers?
I believe they were, but...
I think the commission opted to go with a less is more approach.
Right, and they wanted to be...
I don't have a problem.
They wanted to be cautious not to involve themselves in a litigation.
Is this the final, this is the final draft since, since the last meeting?
Yes.
Is it, is there an inclusion of average, the average dry weather flow?
That's the... That table was taken out.
Without the table?
Yep.
Or is there something?
Is there a statement as to the... That was essentially what was...
It does say, the sentence right before the cross-out says, "The treatment plant currently treats an average of 0.65 mg/d dry weather flow."
So, that is...
And 1.2.
So, 28 to 27?
Yeah.
On page 27, right above the cross-out.
Yeah, that's, that's a good number. These are, these are our, these are our, our flow numbers.
Yeah, so it was really just that...
I'm good, I think less is probably more.
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not, okay.
We just received this, I think, late yesterday.
Yeah, I haven't been super satisfied with the, with the turnaround on these documents.
Well, again, they're...
But it is what it is.
Okay, well, if you have comments, it looks like this thing is winding down.
Yeah.
MTA?
Yes, MTA met last Thursday, we met this day, and there was, the main item on the agenda was a review of a readership, a ridership survey, and a consulting firm, they, they did a survey both of the riders on, during the summer month, and also during a school year month. And then, they also did phone surveys of non-writers, just, you know, random, and basically, there's a high level of satisfaction with the service of MTA, and they have all sorts of data, if anyone wanted to look at, there's an executive summary and lots of data about, for example, that a lot of the riders aren't dependent on transit, many of them have driver's licenses, many of them even have cars. Average riders will ride more than twice a week, or at least, you know, often more than once a week. Of the non-writer survey, at least something like a third of them have used MTA at one time or another, and about 15% have used MTA in the last year. And there's also just strong support, again, among the non-writers for having a transit system, so it shows a pretty good response, basically, and if anyone wants more of the information, it also can be compared with the last ridership survey, which was done about three years ago, and there's some, not a whole lot of change, but in some areas, there's improvements. So, that was the main thing we went over on Thursday last week.
Okay, thank you. EDFC?
Oh, EDFC hasn't met since our last meeting.
League of California Cities?
Did not meet.
Water and wastewater has not met, revived it?
Has not met.
Finance, sounds like it's getting close. Ad-hoc committees, nothing with Caltrans? Anything happen with Solid Waste Project?
Yeah, we met yesterday with Jerry Ward, and we hammered out some details, and we're looking to bring this, what we have, to the city council at their next meeting on February 11th. There will be some items that have been agreed to, and other items that we're gonna have some choices to make.
Okay. Anything more to report on the solar project?
We are waiting, we're expecting a meeting very shortly. We're getting very close. Details are being worked out, and I'm hoping we should have this nailed in a little while.
Main Street improvements, I know what we're after there is a, to get that map to Caltrans with the infrastructure things, is that, are we clear on what we need to do there?
I think so. I had a conversation with Doug Jones today, he's the engineer in charge, I believe, of the relinquishment. We talked about the Main Street water line, and there's a, there's a class coming up, Caltrans is putting on February 25th and 26th on complete streets, that they would like us to have someone attend, a staff, staff member. I know it conflicts with a recent class that's scheduled, but we need to get somebody over there. I talked to Jeremy about having him go over for two days.
Yeah, we need, if you guys can't do it, then maybe Larry or I, so one of us can, because I think we, I mean, maybe it's not meant for elected officials, but, I mean, we just need to, we had a good momentum going, and they're, they're working, I know, on designing the relinquishment project, and, I mean, it was fortuitous, we actually, Rod and I were having lunch the other day, and Matt Brady, and the maintenance guy from Caltrans, happened in, and they were, they asked, asked us about whether we had, where that information was held up, so. I just think we, we wanna make that project go dovetail well into that, then we need to get this, a map of where some of our major, where we anticipate the electrical and water connections need to be in the street, so, and the approximate curb locations and stuff of those bulbouts, and then they can incorporate that into the plans.
They did, he did confirm that it was post-bypass work, you know, once the bypass was completed.
But I think it's in the, it's in the planning stage right now.
Right, absolutely, yeah.
So, yeah, it is post-bypass.
Yeah, we've been working with their right-of-way people, trying to get them utilities information that they need, so.
Thank you. Center for the Arts?
We're getting, tomorrow morning, Kevin's gonna firm up a meeting. We have a group of people assembled for that. Kind of a core, so the thinking is have an initial meeting with the core group of the stakeholders, and, and lay out the next steps for how we're gonna come to some sort of decision point on this, and then invite other people in the community into that process.
So, that's Rod and I, I guess, will participate in that. And I see that they are having an art opening on...
Yeah, it's like a members', yeah, this, this Saturday.
I got, I got mine noticed on that. Any other committee reports? See, now, do we have any council member reports and recommendations?
Yes. This is sort of stating the obvious, but once we have any information on the bypass viaduct collapse, as far as, you know, the delay expected, I assume I'll hear about it through the news sources, but if we get that information, I would certainly like to, of course, I think everyone's gonna be interested to hear that. And I just wanna commend our fire and, and police that were on scene right away, and I'm really glad that no one was further injured than they were. I mean, they were really lucky. I also wanted to add, you guys may have heard, but there was a major fire in Fortuna today. I don't know if people heard of that this morning, and the Star Hotel, Historic Hotel is badly burned. And then, there was the earthquake this afternoon, so I don't...
Really?
Yeah, so they're having a hard time up there, up north. There was a five-point, something, five-point, that big, outside of Rio Del.
Wow.
Yeah, so, be kind to our neighbors up north.
We need rain out there.
Any other council member reports or recommendations? Any good and welfare this evening?
Yeah, I just wanted to announce that this Sunday at 4:00, John Jevons, who is a local and very world-renowned, but local expert in growing more, more vegetables than you could ever grow in a small amount of space, he's gonna be giving a talk at the Grange at 4:00 on how to grow soil and nutrition. So, the idea being that you feed yourself, but you also replenish the soil and get the right kind of calories and keep it sustainable. So, if anyone would like information about that, here's a little, a little fire.
Great, thank you, Brian.
I'll pass them down. Anyone wants one?
Super Bowl Sundays.
Yeah, well, you got a choice, you can garden, or you can do the Super Bowl.
Well, I don't know.
Okay, excuse me, any other good and welfare? Then, we're going to recess to close session to, on two items. One is existing gift mitigation with Brook Trails, and then, well, the other item we added with our amended agenda is involving the REMCO site. So, any decisions are made out of that, we will report back into this chamber's immediately at the conclusion.